Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the Washtau County Board of Commissioners regular commission meeting for June 25th, 2019 to order. We will start with a salute to the flag. Mr. Caraselli, would you do us the great honor of leading us in the pledge, sir?
We're led to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Roll call, Vaughn Hartung, Chair.
Present.
Bob Lucy, Vice Chair.
Here.
Marcia Berkigler.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Janie Herman.
Here.
Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Paula Borelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Manager, item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have our annual appearance by the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority, starting us off this morning with Mary Lee Mora to present.
Ms. Mora, welcome. Nice to see you.
Good morning. And I think you have my presentation there.
Should be coming.
They're doing it from the back of the room. I, you know, I'm not sure.
Well, I'll keep it rolling while we get the presentation up. Thank you so much, Mary Lee Mora, CEO of the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority. And I make sure I can... First of all, I want to just thank you for the reappointment of Lisa Gianoli, your recent reappointment of Lisa Gianoli, to serve another term on the Airport Authority. She has been our chairwoman this year. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here. She's out of town today. But Nat Caraselli, your other appointee, is here today. And both of the appointments that you've made to the board have done phenomenal things for the airport, and we're just very grateful for the solid appointments that you've made. Okay, I've got to go in the right direction here. So I just want to be really brief, but again, I'm here today really to say thank you again for the great appointments and thank you for your support for the airport. I think we've talked a lot about who the Airport Authority is. We do operate two airports, Reno-Tahoe International and Reno-Stead Airport, nine passenger airlines, three cargo carriers, three runways, 23 gates, and obviously a 24/7 operation. We're really proud of the work that we've done in recent years on air service because really, you know, that is what our community is looking for, is for us to add more flights. So we got through the recession and lost about a third of our flights, but I'm really proud to say that we've made up for that in recent years and really had great growth. I mean, I think some of the things that we're particularly proud of is really bringing in JetBlue Airlines with that flight to JFK, and again, they serve Long Beach. Our new thing that we're trying to get from JetBlue, our real target, is Boston service, and we're hopeful that we can get that done because in 2020, JetBlue will be starting service to London from both JFK and from Boston, so that would be really a great addition for our community. I want to go back and just really, for a moment, just talk about the makeup of the airport. We are financially self-sufficient, no local tax dollars go to our operation. One of the things that we did is last fall, we did update our economic impact statement, and that's $3.1 billion per year for Washtau County. And I think one thing that we hadn't really talked about in the past is of that amount, $52 million is in tax revenues for northern Nevada and $11 million for the Washtau County School District. What we looked at in 2018 is that we had almost a 5% increase in passengers, with 4.2 million passengers being served. And actually, now what we've looked at is we're now, I think, at 47 months of consecutive growth. So again, we've been going in the right direction and got through the recession and again, growing our numbers at Reno-Tahoe International. We have a support group in the community that I always need to mention because I think when we bring in new air service, it's so important that that air service is supported by the community and marketed so that that flight stays in the community. And this organizational Regional Air Service Corporation has actually been around since about 2001. They incorporated a few years ago when the opportunity with JetBlue came along. And so now, we're really continuing to grow this organization and particularly to bring business partners, in addition to having a number of convention and visitors bureau organizations as part of this. One of the things is that we're planning for the future. We just recently completed a master plan for the next 20 years for Reno-Tahoe International Airport. It's been approved by the Federal Aviation Administration. And the improvements that you can expect to see on the early horizon is that we're going to be bumping out the front of the ticketing area, really to increase the passenger flow, put some restrooms in that area. And we're in the process of launching really a new consolidated rental car facility. And like, unlike other airports where you have to shuttle to that facility, it will be within walking distance of the terminal. And then we're looking at replacement of our 40-year-old concourses, starting with the first replacement of Concourse C, and then further down the road, we'll be doing Concourse B. But these are all in the near term. So this really shows you kind of the location. It was important to us that we have a win for our local customers of keeping parking right across the street and again, keeping the rental car in easy distance, walking distance to the terminal. And again, the first concourse would be the one in the middle, the Concourse C, and we will have a new customs and border protection facility as part of that new concourse. So you'll be hearing more about all of this new construction. I think that at the end of the day, we're going to be very careful about how we do the construction to make sure that we are still customer-friendly and very convenient during the process. Some of the things that we've enhanced in recent years, we got a lot of feedback from surveys that we need to do a better job with the food at the airport, have more healthy options. So we've had the escape lounge open for about a year and a half now. That's a common-use business lounge. If you're a Platinum American Express customer, you get in there free. Otherwise, you pay a daily fee, but that has done extremely well. And then last December, we opened the Vino-Volo in the Verdi Market. And as you come up out of the checkpoint, the Vino-Volo facility is right there in the Verdi Market. The Verdi Market is all Made In Nevada products. So another new vendor, actually, I will start with the bottom one. Actually, yesterday, we opened Harley-Davidson, which is in the main lobby prior to its pre-security. We're very, very excited about having Harley in the airport. And actually, our Vice Chair Jessica Sforza did ride in on a Harley trike for that opening, but great facility, great merchandise there. Subway has actually had a soft opening about a week ago. And, you know, in addition to McDonald's, I think, again, people wanted another opportunity to have some, you know, quick options at the airport and sort of the healthy food that you can get for Subway on the Sea Concourse is going to, we expect to be very, very popular. Coming soon, hopefully you've seen the construction at the corner of the entrance to the airport, that's the Aloft Hotel, very millennial-oriented hotel. It will be opening early next year. If you want towels, extra towels to your room, they're going to send them by a butler that is actually a robot. So really, it's a fun, I think it's a great addition. The Hyatt Place has been successful from day one, and just to have another hotel next to it is going to be a great addition to the airport. Again, I say we really take customer service seriously, so we're continuously surveying our customers to find out what we can do to improve. And so we've been fortunate, I think, that we've had good customer ratings. I think the thing that I'm probably most proud of is we have a clean airport. And I never hesitate to send pictures of other airports when I'm traveling that aren't that way, because I think that's one of the things that's really, really important. In addition to the sense of really, you know, having a sense of safety and security, I think cleanliness is so important, and our team takes that very seriously. General aviation at Reno-Tahoe International, Atlantic Aviation has invested 50, this is on the east side of the airport, $15 million in that facility. Their busiest time of the year is Burning Man, so that's coming up soon in that we see more and more people that are actually flying into, on private aircraft, into Reno-Tahoe International to get up to the Black Rock Desert. And then Doseo Aviation Services, we've actually had their facility for the overhaul and maintenance of Falcon jets suspended at the airport on the east side for quite some time. So that is also a facility that's doing well. Just to kind of move over and talk a little bit about Reno-Stead Airport, again, it's known for hosting the National Championship Air Races. I think one of the things that we've been very, very active in recently is really having the testing of the drones happen at Reno-Stead and the recent testing that has been done in the urban core of Reno with drones. Actually, the dry run for some of those exercises was done at Stead before they moved the drones downtown. I again want to thank you for your representatives that serve on our Airport Noise Advisory Panel, and that's Patrick Fisher, and then you have Chad Gingsinger from the Planning Department. There are now two openings for other representatives from the county, so do, did want to make you aware of that. And so Chairman Hartung, turn it back to you if there's any questions, and again, to all the commissioners, thank you very much for your support of the airport, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Okay. I have a question, but commissioners, any questions? So my base question, Ms. Mora, is a simple one. When we redo our concourses, will we have more places to plug in personal devices? Because as I've traveled, whether you're in Washington DC or Dallas or Nashville or, you know, Denver, it's always a challenge and they have a tendency to cluster people into those little places where you have to go plug your phone in and then go sit down and tend your bag or sit there, and there's never enough space. So my hope is, is that there'll be more thought put in for plugins.
Chairman, thank you for that question. We always get that comment, and a couple of years ago, we really tried to enhance, you know, the opportunity to charge your mobile devices, and I think you're never going to have enough in any airport. So I think as we look to planning the concourse, one of the things about, one of the reasons we do need new concourses, you know, again, as a 40-year-old concourse, the width of the concourse is about half the size of what the metric is these days. So that will give us an opportunity to have more seating, you know, have some more of those areas that really are places that people can charge up their equipment. So that, you know, customer conveniences will very much be taken into consideration.
I actually love where there's just a plug right down below the seat, and, you know, and I'll always try to seek those out because it's just simple. I can sit there with my bag and charge my phone before I get on the flight. Invariably, the plane that I'm on doesn't have a charger, and it's, it just always seems to be a challenge.
I think as we have the opportunity to buy new chairs in the future with new concourses, they're going to be, come with that kind of standard equipment. It wasn't necessarily the case, I think, when we bought our seating.
Oh, heavens, no.
Not every airport, we actually own the seating, because we wanted to make sure we kept it in good repair. If you go into some airports where they don't own the seating, it's like individual by airline, there's different seating in each of the, you know, the gate rooms, and some of it is not kept up to what our standard would be. But your point is well-taken, and that's something that we'll certainly look at in a new concourse.
No, and I know you guys have looked at lots of designs. I don't think that this, the design will be in a vacuum by any stretch, so I...
Absolutely not.
I appreciate it. Vice Chair Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mary Lee, thank you so much for coming this morning and giving us a brief update on the airport. As it pertains to RASK and kind of the future of growth and the airlines, what are we seeing? Are we, I mean, current, what's our current daily lift, isn't it out of Reno-Tahoe?
About 60 flights.
About 60 flights, and that's about, what, 60, I thought, last numbers, I thought it was about 6,200 passengers in and out.
That's a good peak in terms of a peak day. And actually, this summer, we're running up to like probably 7,000 days because, and that's why our advice really is, if you've got one of those early morning flights, that's our peak time of the day. And whereas people, maybe we're used to getting through the checkpoint in five minutes, if you're not pre-check, you might consider that it's, it may be up to 16 minutes to get through that. So we're having a good summer. And again, the Regional Air Service Corporation is an important partner for us when we go out and talk to the airlines. They want to know that the community is supporting the service.
So we've talked about the Boston, the Boston route is a potential route. Are there other potential routes? I know Baltimore's been one that we've always been, you know...
Well, I will talk about a new airline because I think we've talked about it. We're actually going back for a second time around to meet with Spirit Airlines at the end of this week, going to Fort Lauderdale to meet with them. And we think they're, they would be a good fit in our market. We've actually talked to them about Las Vegas service, Austin service, but actually, an announcement that was, is just being made this morning is that Frontier Airlines, which currently serves Denver, they are actually also adding Las Vegas service in November.
Wow.
So I think many people, you know, we have a, you know, a good amount of lift, I would say, from Southwest Airlines to Las Vegas, but that's still, you know, a very popular destination, and I think it can, it can really accommodate both Frontier being in that market, and we're hoping Spirit Airlines, because Spirit Airlines has definitely built up their presence at Las Vegas. So we're really, you know, we're hopeful to be able to bring in that airline as our 10th airline.
That's fantastic. And then on the work that the RTAA and RASK has done to secure some of these new routes has been phenomenal, so...
Well, and not to mention RSCVA, because I know you wear another hat. RSCVA has been, we, our relationship with RSCVA has never been better. And actually, as we visit, for example, with Spirit Airlines, we not only have a representative of the Regional Air Service Corporation, we also have a representative from staff and the Board of RSCVA. Because again, we need to bring our partners in there and say, okay, here are partners that are going to be able to help you make your flights successful in our community.
Yeah, that's fantastic. The other thing, another question that we didn't see, cargo, as it plays into the master, as it plays into your master plan, you know, I've heard a number of your presentations how cargo is so important to the growth of the airport, and we do a significant amount of cargo. Will the cargo operations move, change? I know you and I had talked briefly about potentially changing those alignments for cargo. Is that going to be something significant we'll see in the future?
Commissioner Lucy, great question. Thank you so much. So our master plan really shows a cargo eventually moving into the southwest quadrant. You know, we really need to have, to pull that trigger. We probably need to have another company come in or something that drives kind of the uptick. We've had a little bit of increase in cargo, but it's, it's been probably stable right now, so there isn't probably a demand driver right now for building the new cargo ramp.
Gotcha.
But it will be on the southwest quadrant.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Mr. Jung.
Ms. Mora, you know I am a giant fan of yours and a woman in a non-traditional career at the helm of an airport, and I want to thank Mr. Caraselli for your dedication to this, especially for the creation of the private and public collaboration to enhance and enhancing and recruiting other airlines to come to this market, which is, in my opinion, first of all, to talk about your airport, I've traveled quite a bit lately, and I'm always looking for an airport I'm going to like better than ours, and I can't find it. And people will...
Yay!
I know, I can't find it anywhere. So people, I went to Malibu, I went to Malibu for a family member's baby shower, and they said, "You're going to love Bob Hope Airport." It is just, they thought it was fabulous because in compared to LAX, it is a different experience. And then up to Portland or Spokane, our airport is second to none. And I just love what you've done with it, and you are right, it is always clean. And that's something that I have noticed too, and sent back pictures of other airports of just how gross some operators can let it get. But I thank you, Mr. Caraselli, for spending your free time, so much that you have, I'm sure, to guide this airport, and I thank you, Ms. Mora, because I think you've done a great job, and it's, it can only get better. We are the best, I believe, but there's always room for better, and the more competition we have to that Vegas route, I would be very happy to see, because we have definitely seen a creep in the price for the tickets because there's kind of one show going on right now.
Well, as of today, there'll be another one with Frontier.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your kind comments.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? The only thing, the last thing that I would say, just to dovetail on Commissioner Jung's statement, I've had friends and family fly in, and they love just the size of our airport, how easy it is to navigate and just in and out, and they, they just, they, compared to McCarran or Sky Harbor, which is where I have family at both places, and it's just, it's so enjoyable, comparatively speaking. So I'm hoping that as we grow, we won't lose that quaintness.
No, that's been important, again, an important part of the master plan, to keep that size. You know, make it, so the parking's right across the street, and so are the rental cars.
Right. Well, I remember when McCarran, when you went outside to pick up your bags, so it was, it was more quaint then, but it has certainly changed. Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, or actually, Madam Manager, forgive me.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your next item is item for public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, would you call public comment?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. First up is Ms. Beth McMillan, followed by Ms. Heather Matthews. And Ms. McMillan gave me some handouts, which I'll distribute to the board.
Ms. McMillan, nice to see you.
Good morning. Esteemed Commissioners, Madam Assistant Manager and Chairman, thank you so much. For the record, my name is Beth McMillan. I'm the Executive Director of Art Town, and it's my pleasure to come to you and announce that in less than a week, the 24th Annual Art Town Festival will kick off. And we're so excited. I'm here to thank you so much for your support, for everything you do to help make this festival possible and make it fantastic. You know, one of our favorite venues, of course, is the Robert Zehoff Amphitheater. The county takes such great care of it. It's really the jewel in our community. I'm only going to speak very shortly because I have a short DVD to show you to get you excited about July. July is plastic-free month, and I know that Kate Thomas has been on my team. We are not going to be selling bottles, plastic bottles of water. And Kate and my team, we've all done this really well. This is silicone, it keeps hot, hot, cold, cold, and if you purchase one of these at Art Town or bring your own container, we will be providing free water, hydration stations. And then if you really have to have a beer and you use this cup, you'll get a dollar off your beer. So we're paying people to get this cup and paying people to think about sustainability. Not only that, Art Town's great. We have so many artists, over 500 events in 31 days in more than 100 locations, many of them are in the county. And I cannot thank you enough, and I'm going to be quiet now and just show you the DVD while I'm going to run out of time.
I'm sorry, we have to cut it. I apologize.
I apologize. Thank you.
But I'd love for you to come back.
No, no, I, when we can put you on our calendar on our, on an actual agenda item. Yeah, that's totally fine. I'm just very grateful for everything you've done. Thank you.
Would you put me on your calendar, please?
Next up is Ms. Heather Matthews, followed by Ms. Tammy Holdstill.
Ms. Matthews, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Heather Matthews, and I was born and raised in Reno and graduated from the University of Nevada Reno. I then moved to California for 20 years and received a Master of Science degree in counseling, summa cum laude. I also received the William Randolph Hearst CSU Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement. I've been active in this community and also have become a certified Veterans Advocate. About three years ago, I wrote a book called Walking Between: The Shadow and the Light. There has been continual interference in publishing this book by a business. I took the matter to court, and it was found that there was interference in the publishing of it, and I was awarded all of my money back. I filed a small claim case against a local computer company for installing spyware in my computer. The defendant walked out at the same time the judge did. There was nobody in the audience, as there usually is in small claim cases. The judge went round and round for two and a half hours and threw out the case, even though Washtau County Manager had written letters that he saw the computer turn blue and erase itself without touching anything. The judge also made disparaging comments about my friend Tom, who's a disabled veteran and was involved in this. I have made numerous reports to law enforcement about threats about my safety and about interference in publishing this book, and nothing was done. I asked for a meeting with Governor Sicilac and was told that he refused to meet with me. My civil rights and constitutional rights have been continually violated, as well as my freedom of speech and press. I intend to sue the city, the county, and the state of Nevada for negligence and infliction of emotional distress for not doing anything about this. Instead, numerous people in high positions have taken bribes and helped to stop this book from going forward. I really can say that I'm embarrassed to say that I was raised in this city, and I feel nothing but contempt for the attempts that I've had to try to get my books published And I'm not going to stop trying to get these books put forward, and they will be put forward despite the interference. And I hope that I can say home means Nevada to me when all of this is over.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Tammy Holdstill, followed by Mr. Vance Rushing. Overhead, please.
Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. As you know, for the last two weeks, or a week and a half, there has been a court case, class action lawsuit, and it was very interesting going and watching it and being vindicated. Now, when my true vindication will happen is hopefully tomorrow, when the jury decides to vote that we are correct in what happened. But until then, there's another matter at hand. Two weeks ago, I started out telling you there was too much head pressure on Swan Lake, and I was showing you where it was breaching at Lemon Drive in two different locations. Well, I started noticing the water going down awful quickly, considering last summer, it took all summer and 20 days of 100 degrees or higher for the water to evaporate only eight inches per Dave Solero and Duane Smith. They testified that it was eight inches to you. Well, since April, that's gone down six inches, and four of those inches has been in the last two weeks. last two weeks. So something's happening with the lake, and nobody wants to talk about it. I'd like to know how come it's going down so quickly. Why is it that we have only had four days of 90-degree weather, and we've lost four inches on that lake in a two-week span, three weeks at the most? Anybody like to tell me? I would like to know. Transparency in Washoe County and the city of Reno is null and void. And as a citizen, everything you guys do should be open to the public. Also, Mr. John Inlow, Tom Waugh, which Washoe County has a big deal to do with, has, it was testified that Tom Waugh's preventing water being pumped off that lake by Mr. DiMartini. Why is that? But yet, why is this lake going down all of a sudden so quickly? Conspiracy theory. Doesn't matter, but it's definitely not out to the public so the public can understand it, and that's where it should be. You guys answer to us. You are paid for by us, and it is time for you to be open to us. Thank you.
Mr. Vance Rushing, followed by Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. Okay, is this enough for the commission?
Yes, ma'am.
One?
One bird.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rushing, welcome.
Good morning. Can I have the overhead, please? And would you be able to zoom in a little bit closer to that photo? Or is that it? That should work. My name is Vance Rushing. I live up at 11520 Oregon Boulevard, which, by the way, is up on the hillside above Swan Lake, and I've noticed that, too. But I was kind of curious as to why, as well. Anyways, last month, I showed you this book, and that picture there. I had been wondering. I knew I'd seen it before. Well, this past week, I was transcribing my VHS tapes titled "The World at War," documentary series from the 1970s, early 1970s. And I got to episode 20, titled "Genocide." And in the process of watching while transcribing, I noticed that picture. That is around about minute 40, minute 41. And the only reason why that was supposed to happen, or that was, did happen, was that the population had been disarmed. Now, I'm still pushing for Second Amendment sanctuary status. Don't think I'll get it, but I'm going to keep pushing. For the simple reason, all these laws, again, when you hold them side by side, that have been passed down in the legislature this past session, achieve the same goals. And two, it basically takes our rights to defend ourselves, not only common criminals, but from political criminals. It takes them hostage. You're not going to get these rights back unless you pay a fee or something, or you do something to comply. Okay? I have to give kudos to Sheriff Balaum for signing on to the petition that he is not going to enforce the universal background checks. A thousand kudos on Sheriff Balaum.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Kathy Brandhorst, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Brandhorst.
Oh, thank you. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I'm still currently homeless. I've been sleeping in a parking lot, and I still can't find no money. I've been to a couple of banks, and they can't find my money either. They tell me I am filthy rich, but I have nothing. I just wanted to let you know that even though I have no money to survive with, there has been several people out there that helped me. I really appreciate it, but I wish they wouldn't, you know, do that because I know how hard it is for them to survive, too. The problem is, right now, is that there's not very many of us out there in that parking lot, but I heard there were 12 of us. And those 12 are with the Washoe County, and so am I. We're all employed here, but where are our payroll checks? Where are our checks? You put us on a check with the Social Security Office, and that check is also a small check that we have to live off of, and it's also called the disability check. And so I don't know, you know, why this is going on, but it still is. And it's not very much money. We expect to get off the streets, even though if it's in a small motel, or a room, or a hotel room, we expect that to happen. But that hasn't helped me or any of them either. We know that we are just a little bit higher than the rest of the people that are employees here, but they also have to be supported, too, by the people who are running this area, the Washoe County. But the Washoe County is not the whole support, but that's what we work for. We work for a payroll check, and that's why we are here, to be supported by most of you. But we don't feel this. I also went out to look at a house, and that house was in my name, and I was supposed to move in. But as soon as I walked out of the house, there's somebody standing there with a machine gun and put over a million bullets in me, so I can't live there.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst.
Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Mr. Sam Dene.
Ms. Weatherly, welcome.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of history, and I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Mora and Ms. Matthews for staying around. It was probably on or about March 1 of 1981 that the love of my life, air pilot Jay Weinshof, said to me, he repeated something that somebody in Idaho, a pilot, had said. This pilot said, "There are old pilots, and there are bold pilots, but there are no old, bold pilots." Well, we laughed about him. He used to look at what is now GSR to see from his little apartment, to see whether the weather was going to be okay for him to fly, all right? Warning signs. If we see there's some turbulence, we don't fly, right? On March 2, 1981, ACESNA T-210N, oh, please, phone. Sorry. Registered N-77FB en route from Fallon to Austin crashed in foul weather. Both the pilot and the single passenger perished in the accident. As a result of this accident, the U.S. Civil Aeronautics Board reviewed Air Chaparral's commuter carrier fitness determination. There were some changes that took place because of the death of my boyfriend. I miss him. I miss him a lot. Got some really good songs out of it. But what I wrote yesterday in my blog was, there are warnings being issued, okay? We have to look at, he saw that the storm was coming. He took the risk because a lady really wanted to get to another place. He took the risk, and they both died. So what I'm going to say is that we have a risk in this community. You guys, you have a bad reputation, okay? I hate to say it, but when I talk to anybody about coming here, they have nothing good to say. What I'm going to say is, if I were on board, and by the way, I asked David Solero if I could please meet with him, Ms. Matthews, and he was too busy for me. A lot of people, I tried to talk to John MacArthur, the leader of the Reform Theology Movement, to say, "May I please have an audience with you because your teaching is incorrect? The gifts of the Holy Spirit do still exist. My brain tumor disappeared." He was too busy for me. So what I'm saying, if anybody is too busy to talk to the likes of somebody like me and Ms. Matthews, then I would evaluate, I would take a little bit of warning, okay? The thing is, too, that I'm going to write a book myself. It's going to be called Expose the Deeds of Darkness: Turn On Your Headlights. This community is immersed in corruption, lies, half-truths, and everybody puts their blinders on and doesn't want to address it. They don't have time to talk to you. We spend too much money on high-risk things. We need to spend more money on people, on like the kids that are brilliant. I would give Ms. Brandhorst help before I would give my daughter help, but you guys fund program after program to try to get people to stop drinking and taking drugs, when guess what, you guys? They like it, all right? They like to drink. They like to get drug, drugged up. So I would ask that, please, can somebody please listen to us, please, and take warning because it's real? The storm's coming. Thanks.
Mr. Sam Dene.
Sam DNA Dene. The guard angel against media wacko freaks in Reno, Nevada. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I've spent years flying fighters and bombers, and I have been defending the nation by coming to these meetings and protecting the citizens, mainly from the media wacko freaks. These folks talk about the wonderful things, the airports, the wonderful things, great airport Reno has, without a doubt, the worst, most corrupt media wacko freaks, especially the Reno Gazette. The Reno Gazette is corrupt, mendacious, perverted, deceptive, and rotten and evil, and they're yellow-bellied, lily-livered cowards. Why don't they say Sam needs therapy? Look it up there. Chusing them off every week, and those cowardly reporters and the bosses up at their headquarters scared to death in their pantyhose of this 160-pound senior citizen. The airport was here talking about wonderful things that are going on. Well, I'm telling you right now, Sam DNA, me, I am responsible for at least, I'm directly or indirectly responsible for at least 27% of the wonderful growth at the airport. Some people say, no, Sam, it's 37% of the growth. Some people think that's a good thing. A lot of people don't think that's a good thing. The lady says, oh, there's no, no public funds go into the airport. That is wrong. So you pay taxes to Washington, taxes come back here. Oh, that's not our taxes. That's free money from Washington. Not true, and I'm not criticizing them, other than the fact they don't have, here I am, fighter pilot, bomber pilot, airline pilot. I've applied for the airport more times than anybody else, but they don't want Sam on there. That's a whole different story. Now, we've got this crazy, crazy Wild Creek School boondoggle coming around to roost, and nobody's paying attention to it, but guess what's happened? The people who created that stupid taxpayer-funded boondoggle are all being fired now. They're all being fired over at the school board, and these people are bully pulpits for the school board, creating that crazy Wild Creek golf course scheme, elderly abuse, hundreds and hundreds of elderly families. Look at the airport left. Couldn't handle me. Hundreds of people are going to have their homes and lives destroyed, building a 200 million, spending $200 million to build a $40 million school. Crazy. And I don't like to get upset. I like to be nice and calm and collected, but coming down here and I hear, I remember these things that you're responsible for. How, that's fruit of the poisonous tree. Those people made that decision. Now they're being fired? Somebody should stop that Wild Creek scheme right now, and there's so many other things I should be complaining about, but I just ran out of time. Could I have another three minutes? All right, would you put me on the agenda, or how do you call it, on the ballot?
Thank you, Mr. Dene.
Thank you.
As soon as you become the head of Art Town, I'll be happy to put you on the ballot.
Thank you, Art Town.
On the agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the public comment I have signed in. I did want to put some correspondence I received from Anne Marie Grant on the record, and it's available for your viewing if you choose. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we will close public comment. Madam Manager, item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number five is the Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have any such items?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Herman.
Thank you. That was quick. All right, so I've had a lot of phone calls and emails and whatnot, and one of them is kind of confusing to me. It was about the drag queen story hour at the library, and, and so, and so what I'd like to know is, do we have the say over the library as to what they can have in the library? Because I, I'm not sure that, what, how that works. So I know that they get our money, their money from the county, and so I'd like to find out what I can do about that, if there's anything. All right, then, I've had quite a few people that have had, over the last four and a half years. It seems like, from all the people that I've dealt with and tried to help, that some of our enforcement people possibly need a little bit of retraining or something. There's, there's some of them that are, I think, a little bit too aggressive on people that are just not understanding what they're supposed to be doing or what's really required of them. So there's some of those cases like that. And then I get calls from other people that nobody's doing anything about some of these real hard cases. So I don't know what we need to do, but I think after I heard this one comment, that maybe we better kind of revisit our, our system. Because what the system was, was that this person had been told by one of the enforcement people that Commissioners can't, they, Commissioners don't have any power over us, so you can't, don't go to them. So after that, it made me a little bit, you know, ruffled up on the back of my neck, and I just thought, we better just kind of check this out, so, thank you. And then there was one other thing. Oh, boy. Well, I guess I, I can't say anymore because I can't remember what it was, so I can, that's a good excuse, huh? Yeah, well, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind everybody that the grand opening of the bike walk path from Incline Village to Sand Harbor is this Friday afternoon. It will begin at 3:30, and the governor and a number of our state legislators will be there, as well as, I think, some of the county staff, and I'll be there, and so there'll be a number of us there, but it's, this is really exciting. This is a big chunk of the state line to state line bike path that we are working on to have a bike walk path all the way around Lake Tahoe. And so this is a big chunk, and it's a good deal that it's, it's done. It's going to be beautiful. I can't wait to walk it, so just make sure everybody knows it, and please come join us.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I wanted to point out, I did have the distinct opportunity this morning to participate in the opening ceremonies of the National Congress for American Indians. They're holding their 75th conference here in Sparks today, and this is a wonderful conference. This obviously brings many tribes from across our country to our area to discuss policy issues as it pertains to the tribal nations and a number of different things. So look forward to having them have a wonderful and successful Congress, and hopefully they enjoyed my comments this morning. I don't know if I did, but I, you know, it was interesting to sit there and participate in that. It was a very, it was a distinct honor. Also, one thing I want to point out for residents of District 2, a couple of comments have been, people have been worried about the traffic and challenges at Edmonton and Butch Cassidy, next to Galena High School, all the traffic, safety issues, I mean, traffic safety improvements are going to be going in in the next couple of weeks. There will be sidewalks going in, flashers for that area. flashers for that area around the Durrell Academy. So unfortunately, we weren't able to install those during schools, the school year, but we will be installing those now through, before school starts up back up in August. And then one last thing, you know, being that Friday seems to be a popular day this week for a number of things. We do have the Virginia Street opening this, this on Friday at 11:00 a.m. downtown. Hopefully, everybody can participate in that. It's showing the new project, the construction, the next 18 months of construction, but it is a ribbon-cutting. We'll have members of the RTC and some of our congressional delegation there to help get that project underway. So hopefully, in the next 18 months, we will have a new and vibrant and very thorough traveled area of Virginia Street. So we're looking forward to that. And also, as many of you got, coming here this morning, probably recognized, Reno Rodeo is in full swing. And so we remind everybody that, you know, obviously, get out, enjoy the rodeo. It's one of our heritage events here, our legacy events. Very neat to get out and participate. I guess Reno, the tickets are going, almost gone, I think pretty much sold out for the remainder of the week. But if you are coming down, traffic is a nightmare, and parking is even worse. So if you can come, find, utilize public transit, utilize any other ways to get down here. We highly recommend it. Be safe while you're down at the Reno Rodeo this week. Enjoy. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like a staff report or some sort of communication as to what our preparation and progress we are going to look into for all of our first responders in terms of being provided with Stop the Bleed kits. And that has to do with, fortunately, a reality of our world, which is mass shootings. And many across the country in the world, first responders are, are carrying things that are much more like battlefield materials, tourniquets, et cetera, because of the massive damage that happens in a heavy fire, you know, heavy firefight situation. So, and, and there's also been a push nationally to train everybody how to stop a bleed if it was a major artery, et cetera, to save lives. Because that's the biggest threat in any situation with heavy artillery, that bleeding. So I would, I would just like to, if staff could poke around and find out if there is a state fund for this, if there's a local fund, if we're already doing it, I've never heard about it, if we have, but I would really like to see, and what's the best practice? I, I didn't, I didn't have time to really do any research on sort of who's supporting this, and what's the purpose, and does it make a difference. But I would like to see if, you know, if we're not going to be able to keep guns out of people's hands that are intent on hurting many people at one time, I think we have to protect ourselves as a community and as human beings, no matter where we're at. So if you could please, Madam Manager, look into that. I would love that. It doesn't necessarily have to come back here. It could be a report. It could be, you know, it doesn't have to be extensive either, lots of staff time, just kind, is it buzzing through other people's heads who are much smarter and much more prepared than I, and this is their subject matter that they're experts on. And then I want to let the board know that on July 8th, I am going on a tour of Sun Valley with Mr. Gett Part. Remember, he was here from the Nevada Department of Agriculture to talk to us about noxious weeds. Mr. Chris Melton will be joining us. He's the GID General Manager for Sun Valley, and we are going to do a tour there. And then Mr. Gett Part also would like to take me to Rancho San Rafael, also in my district, to look at some concerns he has there as well. So I will be reporting back the very next day, July 9th, when we have a board meeting. But I wanted to let you know, and if anybody was interested, Commissioner Herman, I'd love to have whoever is interested to go without breaking our quorum laws, or any other staff, or, or community members who are interested in noxious weeds and ways that we can take care of it, that doesn't also kill the bees and other beneficial insects and critters that we have all throughout our land. I've had, I've had, just to give you a heads up, I've had some complaints about Rancho San Rafael, that we don't control our weeds enough. And a lot of that is a misunderstanding, but I also need to go look at it, too, from a subject matter expert, and I will report back that, to that, to you as well. But I, I am well-intended to make a nice balance between that. We don't want to get rid of every weed, and then every bee, and ladybug, et cetera, at the same. I think we're way past the 70s when it comes to that. So I will report that back to you on July 9th, our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you make a stop at my house and bring back a copious amount of samples of weeds?
Absolutely. We will be right by your place.
I would love that.
And we're gonna write you up, too.
That's, they're in my backyard, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I would love for you to come and.
We'll be there, sir.
Perfect. Perfect. Anyone else? Okay, just one thing for me. Madam Manager, we have a, and it's an allowed use in our area plan. It's an allowed use by code in terms of the land use, the land use table. But we have a charter school going in, in Spanish Springs, and we may need to get on some type of a community meeting where we invite the proponents, it's Pinecrest, to tell us about what they plan on doing, and, and then I would really like to hear from staff. I, I had a couple of conversations yesterday, but I'd like to hear from staff in terms of how we've approached some of the issues that, that could potentially arise from having a school. And it's not a bad thing. It's just, you know, traffic and the impacts and et cetera, in a, in a particular neighborhood, where typically it would be a, a public school, not that this is not a public school, but it would be a, you know, Washoe County School District school that does have transit, and this, and charter schools typically don't have access to formalized transit systems. Anything else? Anyone? Okay. I will close. Item number five. Madam Manager, item number six.
Thank you. Item number six is your consent agenda, and those are items 6A through 6L. I believe you have several appointments within there, and 6C1, we have a statement that needs to be read into the record.
Mr. Chair, at this, at this time.
Please, Commissioner Lucy.
In pertaining, as Madam Manager pointed out, for 6C1 would be the appointment, recommended the appointment to, of Catherine Nelson to the Washoe County Planning Commission. Before we make that, this move forward with the consent agenda, I'd like to read this into the record. I'd like to make the disclosure that on the record that Catherine Nelson is the sister of interim county manager Dave Solero. This would not influence the decision-making process of the planning commission, and there is no direct oversight by Mr. Solero into the work of the planning commission. This decision to appoint Mrs. Nelson is based upon her background as a civil engineer, and, and her experience, firsthand experiences, growing up in the unincorporated area of Washoe County. I have met with Ms. Nelson and had had many discussions in regards to her position on the board, and feel that she would be a wonderful appointment for, to represent District Two, and feel that there would be no, there would be no challenges of her serving on that, in that, in that capacity. Thank you, Mr. Man, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioners, does anyone need any explanations in the consent agenda, or want anything pulled? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion, and then a second, and then we will take public comment.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Vice Chair Lucy. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
Kathy Brandhorst.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. Most of us are being forced to retire. We're not even at the age of being retired. And I just wanted to tell you that this is not fair to be forced, because, okay, take an example, Trucking Metals Fire Protection District Chief Fiscal Officer. All right, we're not sure who the officer is. We're not sure who the chief is, and we are not sure who the Trucking Metals Fire Protection District is. We are always told that they are employees, but they're also people who are, what is that? They can be appointed and still be with the Trucking Metals Fire Protection District. But they are only volunteers, volunteer workers. And the trouble is, is that we're not sure who the people are that are going to be retired. And then they come in to the business and say that they have never been retired. They are the employees. They are the ones that are being appointed. They are the ones that were elected. But how do we know this? Is it true that we are being forced to be retired because these people are actually coming into the area to be hired? Were they really elected? Were they really put into work? Were they really the ones that are supposed to be here? We don't really look into this at all. I don't feel this. I feel that you are forcing the people out of the area because you're going to force them to retire. Maybe take their money. Maybe take their house. Stealing it. But they don't really deserve to be homeless. They don't really deserve to become out of our system, out of our area because they were forced to retire. What I'm trying to say is, do you look into this?
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst.
That was all the public comment we had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Vice Chair Lucy. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Manager, item number seven.
Mr. Chair, item number seven, you have a little piece of paper in front of you, as this item is a recommendation to appoint one candidate, which you will select from two applicants, Amy Gilery and Linda Crowe, to fill one vacating seat on the Washoe County Library Board of Trustees, with the term being effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2023. So if you would, wouldn't mind, and Chair, if you want to lead them through this process, putting your name and your selection on the paper, and we will have the clerk collect those, and have the clerk read them into the record for the vote.
Okay, before we do this, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment, especially by either one of the two applicants?
I see no one signed into the system.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item, on these two applicants? Okay, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, amongst ourselves, is there any, do we have any questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, what I'll ask you to do is, again, just put your name at the top, and then your choice, and then, Madam Clerk, would you collect these, and then read them off?
Certainly.
So, Madam Clerk, when you open them up, please ensure that you can read everyone's writing. Mine is always suspect.
Okay. I will do so, Mr. Chairman. First, do you want me to read who voted for who?
No, not, not yet.
Okay.
Just make sure that you can, that you can read each one of them legibly before you move through the process. Again, sometimes I've written things down, and then I stand there, and I look at it, and I think, what did I just write?
I can understand each of them perfectly.
Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Will you read off each Commissioner's vote?
Gene Herman, Amy Gilery, Marsha Burke Bigler, Amy Gilery, Chair Hartung, Amy Gilery, Vice Chair Lucy, Amy Gilery, and Commissioner Jung, Gilery. It was unanimous.
I don't think that there's a question, then. Okay.
Chair, at this time, I would recommend, based upon the votes submitted to the clerk, that we appoint Amy Gilery to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye for Amy Gilery.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As we already know, motion carries unanimously. That's, that, I think that's a first for us. Okay.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to propose a block vote, if you're ready.
Please, Commissioner Lucy.
Mr. Chair, at this time, in the form of a motion, I'd like to place the following agenda items into a block vote. Items eight, items nine, items 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy. Do I have any, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, yes, Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Why are we not putting, sorry. Why are we not putting 20 in the block vote also?
I would.
We could.
Be fine with putting item number 20 in the block vote. If it's, is it legal, Mr. Leparelli?
Mr. Chairman, under state collective bargaining laws, the, the board's required to have a public hearing to approve collective bargaining.
Understood. Okay. So there lies the answer. Okay. So, Madam Manager, will you go ahead? Commissioners, is everyone okay with, with that suggestion of a block vote? Or does anyone need any information on any of those items, or want anything pulled out of the block vote? Okay, seeing none, Madam Manager, would you go ahead and read those, and then, Madam Clerk, I'll have you call public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have blocked item number eight, which is a recommendation to appoint Eric Crump as Acting Community Services Director with a 10% temporary pay adjustment, following the appointment of David Solero as interim Washoe County Manager, which will be retroactive to June 17, 2019, and serving until such time as a permanent county manager is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Item number nine is a recommendation to approve an agreement between Washoe County and Journal Technologies for the purchase of e-probation case management software for the Washoe County Department of Alternative Sentencing, for the term of the agreement to commence on July 1, 2019, for a total cost of $305,000. Item number 11 is a recommendation to authorize the comptroller to renew the excess workers' compensation insurance policy with Safety National for two-year term with an annual premium of $277,120,000, and the property boiler and machinery, cyber liability, and pollution liability insurance policy with the Public Entity Property Insurance Program for a one-year at a premium not to exceed $657,044 effective July 1, 2019, and authorize the comptroller's office to sign the applications and agreements necessary to bind coverage funding from the Risk Management Fund source. Item number 12 is a recommendation to authorize the comptroller to renew the excess liability insurance policy with Palis Insurance Company for $199,380 effective July 1, 2019, and authorize the comptroller's office to sign the applications and agreements necessary to bind coverage with funding from the Risk Management Fund. Item 13 is a recommendation to approve a 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant, known as EMPG, letter of intent stating that the Nevada Division of Emergency Management is awarding $178,77,000 for the period retroactive from October 1, 2018, through March 31, 2020. As this award funds personnel, if the grant funding is reduced or eliminated, the positions and hours will be reduced and/or abolished accordingly. Item number 14 is a recommendation to approve Amendment Number Two to an Agreement Regarding November 2,000 Parks, Trails, and Open Space Bonds, Lake Tahoe Bike November 2,000 Parks, Trails, and Open Space Bonds, Lake Tahoe Bike Path Projects, Parks WC1 for Phase Four of the Lake Tahoe Bike Path Project between Washoe County and the Tahoe Transportation District, to extend the term from June 30, 2019 to June 30, 2020, with no fiscal impact, and authorize the Assistant County Manager Dave Solero to execute the Agreement Number Two and all appropriate Tahoe Transportation District-related agreements and documents. Item 15 is a recommendation to approve the asset reassignment of multiple vehicles from various Washoe County Departments to Equipment Services Fund 669, and direct the comptroller's office to make the appropriate asset adjustments for a net of $397,287.16. Item 16 is a recommendation to approve the fiscal year 1920 sole-source purchases of computer network equipment and accessories through a jointer with National Association of State Procurement Officers, price agreements for State of Nevada with Converge One, and approve the expenditures that will aggregate to exceed $100,000 but not exceed $750,000, and will remain within the available adopted budgets for fiscal year 19 and 20. Item 17 is a recommendation to approve fiscal year 1920 sole-source purchases of computer network equipment, servers, data storage, personal computers, and printers through a jointer with the National Association of State Procurement Officers, master price agreements for the State of Nevada with Dell Incorporated, and approve expenditures that will aggregate to exceed $100,000 but will remain within the fiscal year 1920 adopted budget, not to exceed $2 million. And finally, item number 18 is a recommenda, oh, no, we have one more, sorry. 18 is a recommendation to approve a reimbursement of costs incurred by the City of Reno for $428,776.40, the City of Sparks, $203,243.32, and the Departments of Washoe County, $521,357.30 for expenses related to and in support of the respective portable event recording device programs as approved by the 911 Emergency Response Advisory Committee on May 16, 2019, for a total amount not to exceed $1,153,377.20. Finally, a recommendation to approve and execute the resolution levying tax rates for all Washoe County entities for fiscal year 2019 and 2020. Those are your blocked items.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a motion, we have a second. Will you call public comment, please?
Certainly, I have Kathy Brandhorst signed in on Agenda Items Eight and Eleven, and I noticed Commissioner Herman buzzed in for number 18. I don't know if that's public comment or a Commissioner comment.
I'll come back under discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Brandhorst, for Agenda Items Number Eight and Eleven.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. Let's see, on number eight, we have the Washoe County Manager, but you don't know who the manager really is because it's not stated here. I just wanted to let you know that some of these people who change the names cannot be afforded to do this, but they have been doing it in the past and in the future, too. Serving such, well, until such time as a permanent county manager is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We know who the manager is, but you cannot be doing this overlapping another person because the person is the manager. Now, also 11 is now I'm going to be talking about. I heard back in San Jose, California, the person will not be picked up by a RMSA, an ambulance, or no other service because the person has no insurance. He has been injured, he has bullet holes, he also has bugs inside his body and need to be removed immediately, or he will die. You have a lawsuit now because the RMSA refused to pick up the person because he has no insurance. Your lawsuit is $277,120 because the person is going to die. Now, the other one is $657,044 because he may be blind because of his injuries that you did not enforce. The RMSA, the county is not going to be involved, I guess, in helping this person even though he does not have insurance. Your lawsuits are going to be growing and growing because you did not take care of this person. Doesn't have insurance, just throw him in the garbage, right? And say that he doesn't exist. Well, he does exist, he is United States-born.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone else signed in?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner Herman, did you, I don't have you signed in any longer, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On 19, I was just thinking that maybe we should explain this to the people out there in the audience and on their computers, and explain that we're not doing something against the law or anything.
Mr. Leparelli, would you give us an explanation to item 19? We had conversations about this earlier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, state law requires counties to annually levy the tax rate that corresponds to the budget that the county approved. So this is the formal act of levying the tax rate that will apply countywide. It includes the components for the cities, the districts, the debt, all the obligations of the county that are tied to a tax rate. And without, without this resolution, you would be failing in your duty to levy this tax on an annual basis.
Would you, would you define what occurred this morning as the, as the trigger? We were waiting for an affirmation from the, from the Tax Commission.
I'd be happy to step in. This morning, the Tax Commission, we, our move by the County Commission was to take action following the action of the Tax Commission, and we were to wait until that action was completed, which it had been this morning.
Thank you, okay.
It's appropriate to take the vote.
Perfect, okay. Is that enough, Commissioner Herman, or do you have other questions? Okay, Commissioners, anyone else? Okay, seeing none on the block vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Manager, I believe we are on to item 10 now.
We are, thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been pulled from block as we need to correct a clerical error and put that on the record. In front of each Commissioner, you have a new item number 10. It's in a packet that was handed out by the clerk. In the posted agenda, we have a total amount, once the Commission has approved the item, which I'll read, and then I'll make the correction, but this is a recommendation to approve the interlocal agreement to support the operations of a 20-bed community triage center for those in need of crisis psychiatric services, medical and social detoxification from alcohol and/or other substances, or co-occurring disorders for individuals who are 18 years of age or older and are not in need of emergency room care, for a total amount of, and this is the correction, the number should be $1,274,862, so the delta there was $70,000. Washoe County portion is $190,000 cash, that does not change, and it's retroactive June 15, 2019 through June 30, 2020, with the option to renew for a one-year period. So again, you have the corrected item in front of you, and that's been corrected for the record.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Jung, Vice Chair Lucy, I have you signed in, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I want to, I just would like to point out that this is a phenomenal opportunity for us to bring back a service that has been missing from our region for quite some time since the departure of West Care. This has been something that has been challenging our jails for a number of times, a number of these individuals, instead of going to a, this 20-bed triage center, they have been going to our jails and inundating our system there, which has been a challenge for our sheriffs. And so it is, it is a great opportunity for us to reinstall this into our community in WellCare, not to be confused with the previous provider, but WellCare is a phenomenal provider. They have, I've met with them a tremendous amount of times. They seem committed to this region and continue to do growth here in the region, whatever that may be, this not being their only vestager, but looking forward to many other opportunities to help increase this type of care within our community. So I'm fully supportive of this and all the work, and I want to thank WellCare for their time and commitment to this. And I also want to thank our Human Services Director, Amber Howell, for her continued work and effort to bring this back online. So thank you again, once again, Amber Howell, thank you for your time and effort in this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? And I, and I would agree with you, thank you for that, that great explanation. This is one more methodology that we can use to try to keep people out of the detention facility, which is an extremely expensive place, to, to deal with certain kinds of issues, and we have no other place, and so this is, this is, this is much needed. I'm looking forward to, to seeing the efficacy. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
We have no one signed in, sir.
Okay, I will close public comment. Commissioners, I will bring it back to the board. We have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Jung. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Somebody did not...
I have no, it is me that is the somebody, because I have no...
It went away as soon as I recorded your vote, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you hadn't voted yet.
It, it...
So verbally, we have a unanimous vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hartung is an aye. Okay. Madam Manager, I believe that takes us now to item 20.
Yes, that's correct. This item is a recommendation to approve a collective bargaining agreements with the Washoe County Nurses Association for the non-supervisory and supervisory bargaining units for the three-year period, beginning July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022, including cost of living adjustments and base wages of 3% effective July 1, 2019. Fiscal year 1920 is estimated fiscal impact of $86,919, 2.5% beginning July 1, 2020. Fiscal year 2021, estimated fiscal impact is $89,700, and 2.5% beginning July 1, 2021, with the fiscal year 2122 estimated fiscal impact of $91,719, and updated agreement language regarding salaries of personnel, standby pay, shift differential, holidays, vacation, bereavement leave, health plan, career development, professional licenses and fees, distribution of contract, onsite childcare, duration of agreement, and rights of the association. I believe we have Patricia Hurley here, if there are questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
I have no one signed in, sir.
I will close public comment. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Jung. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Okay, item 21, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 21 is a first reading of an ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110, which is the Development Code.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If introduced, this will bear Bill Number 1826, an ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110, Development Code, within Article 406, Building Placement Standards 110.406.05 General, to add a requirement regulating setbacks on legal non-conforming lots when the lot size does not meet the minimum lot size for the actual regulatory zone applicable to the lot. The allowed setbacks will be based on the regulatory zone thresholds for the next densest regulatory zone for which the actual lot size does meet the minimum lot requirements, and to remove Section 110.406.35E, side yards, prior zoning regarding the option to use the side yard setback requirements of the land use category compared to the parcel size for lots created prior to May 26, 1993, and other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Lloyd, I see you have, you have approached, give us the elevator pitch, the 18-second elevator ride.
Absolutely, we have a presentation available, however, again, based on your request, I will keep this very, very brief. The idea of this, this code amendment is long overdue. It's really, we, there's a number of non-conforming lots throughout the county with setbacks that really don't match their regulatory zones. This will fix that problem and essentially make lots more consistent with, with the setback requirements based on lot sizes.
Okay, Commissioners, do, do you have any questions? Yeah, this is a, this is a cleanup, something I, I know, I don't know whether anybody else has dealt with this, but I've, I've, I've dealt with this in, in District Four on a couple of occasions, so I'm, I'm glad to, I'm glad to see this. Okay, there are no questions. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed in under public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, I will close public comment. I will entertain, actually, I will take an introduction to Bill 1826, please.
I'll introduce...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill Number 1826.
With the second reading to be held on July 9, I think.
Sorry, yes, sir, I didn't look at the whole staff report, thank you.
I was making the assumption, thank you.
Appreciate it, yes.
Thank you so much. So I have, I have an introduction.
Can I say something, too, about this bill?
Please.
I think that it's important that we do recognize and point out, this also removes some limits, which should also then translate into more affordable housing for our missing middle and our lower-income people. The more limits we reduce from this in the construction and design of lots, hopefully that, that barrier taken away will lessen the cost of developing when we are in a situation, which I might tell the entire Commission going up to Spokane and going to different places that I've been traveling, tell me one, one area that doesn't have a housing crisis. It's not just us. Everybody can't afford their housing. Our wages don't match our rent and our mortgages. So I want to point this out, this is also a barrier that we've removed. We should, probably should keep a list of what we have done as a county, because next is the cargo containers, and that's also lends itself to affordable housing. I really think we should keep a whole list of what has the county did, done, other than the big splash of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Okay? I'm not saying get rid of all, you know, regulations and what have you, but we must do everything that we can to address what we can as a, as a government. Thank you, it's introduced, Mr. Chairman, thank you for...
Thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you for the indulgence.
And I, my, my pleasure, and I, and I look at this as, as a simplification of our code as well, making things just easier to deal with, because there are some complexities in our code that, that make zero sense, so, okay. Item number 22, Madam Manager.
Item number 22 is also introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, the Development Code, having to do with cargo containers.
Okay. Ms. Mullen.
Would you like a first reading, sir?
Please, while Ms. Mullen is approaching.
If introduced, this will bear Bill Number 1827, an ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110, Development Code, within Article 306, accessory uses and structures, at Section 110.306.10, detached accessory structures, to revise the allowable quantity, location, size, aesthetics permitting, and other standards associated with the placement of cargo containers... of cargo containers as detached accessory structures used for storage, within Article 1310, temporary uses and structures, at Section 110.310.35H, temporary contractor or owner-bearer materials or equipment cargo containers, to update the point in the permitting process at which a cargo container may be placed upon a vacant piece of property to support construction and to establish additional timeframes regarding when such a cargo container must be removed, within Article 902, definitions, at Section 110.902.15, general definitions to establish a definition for cargo container, and other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Ms. Mullen? This is, we, we have, and, and I, I will tell you, before I call public comment, I had a fellow stop me at my mailbox the other day and was thrilled with this. He's an antique car buff, and he said, "I'm looking forward to this because I have huge copious amounts of, of automobile parts that he has not been able to store properly," and he's looking forward to having a cargo container that he can store them out of the weather and, and securely, so I, I was, I was pleased to hear that. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
Certainly. Ms. Amanda Hilbert?
Hi, thank you. I'm not good with speaking to people.
You'll be fine.
I don't know if this runs along the exact same line. I'm currently going through the situation, not exactly a cargo container. My husband and I purchased a semi-truck trailer, which we placed on our property, not realizing we couldn't have it, because we're on over an acre of land. We didn't look into that. I didn't think it was a problem out where we live in Cold Springs. But it was brought to our attention by code enforcement that we're not allowed to have it. We looked for anything that we could possibly do as far as removing the axles and the wheels off of the cargo container to make it, basically, just like this. It's a semi-truck trailer. We were told over and over again that the only reason that we can't have it is because it's stated in the code that it's for transport use. I'm not looking at the paper right now, but I just don't understand the difference. If we remove the, the axles off of it, and we remove the tires off of it, and it's on the ground and it can't move, it's not destroying the roads. We can't pull it anywhere. I mean, what are we going to drag it with? It's a semi-truck trailer. It's basically the same thing you're looking at there. We're trying to figure out how, if any way, the verbiage can be changed in the code itself to allow us to have something like this. At this point, I'm sure we're kind of beyond, because we only have until the 20th of August. This started last year. We did reach out to our Commissioner, and she kind of stated it earlier. We were told by the code enforcement that she has no say, absolutely no say whatsoever, over whether we can or cannot, and I thought, you know, Commissioner, she should have a say of some sort. The way it was stated was, we, we should be able to keep it. It was just whether or not we would have to remove the tires and the, the axles. So, we waited to see if that would happen, while we moved in a few months down the road, and we received a fine. I've already gone to a hearing. They also told us that we can't do anything, but I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is between the two, the semi-truck and the cargo container. If the axle and the tires are removed, it can't go nowhere, it can't destroy our streets. But that's the verbiage they keep going back on every time we talk to them about it, is that because it can wear down our roads, we can't use it for storage. But I, I just can't see any difference between the two whatsoever. I mean, a semi-truck trailer goes through, the weather goes through 70 mile an hour, you know, driving on roads, I'm sure it can withstand the, you know, toe on a ship if you've removed the axles and the tires, but that's basically all I'm asking for, is if you guys can look at the verbiage, see if there's anything that could be done. It may not help me, but it could help others, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was all your public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'll bring this back to the board. Mr. Lloyd, I'll probably bring you up, because I, I sadly, or perhaps Mr. Crump, because I know I've had this conversation with Mr. Solero on commercial vehicles in large lot residential areas, and there are numerous people in my neighborhood who have large vehicles. It's what they do for a living, and they park them on their lots. They have, for one fellow who lives in my neighborhood, he's had his truck for, he's lived there longer than I have, of 32 years, and that's his, that's his job. He, he runs a home business, and he's been very successful. I see no difference with this request as a, as a job van. This is the same as what Western Nevada Supply would bring out and put on your property if you were doing a, an addition or building a home or something of that nature, and so, just, just categorized as a job van, and as long as it's on the back parcel or the back portion of the parcel, like a cargo container, what would be the difference? Why, why would we tell someone that they couldn't have a, a used semi-trailer that really serves exactly the same function?
And I'll, I'll do my best, Mr. Chair, to, to, to address that question, and I know you had raised the question about the commercial vehicles, and apologize, we will be getting to that next. That's going to be our, the next code amendment that we, we want to bring forward to you all fairly, fairly recently. Now, regarding the difference between a cargo container and a trailer such as this, it's really a matter of a definition, and I don't know if I'm, I'm ready to speak to that difference. I know there's some structural differences involved. Cargo containers, I know that we, we address that in our code, they're, they're very soundly built. I can't, I don't know, you know, what the structural definition is for a trailer that's used by a semi-truck, but I would like to address that as we move forward with the new code amendment, when we address commercial vehicles on, on private properties, so...
And, and I, and I appreciate that, because essentially, essentially, this is, there's, there's really no difference in my mind with respect to somebody storing in a, in a, a trailer that's, that's used, that a semi would typically haul, versus a cargo container which would sit on the ground. I mean, other than the fact that you need a stairwell, you know, a stairway to get up to it, and by the way, I had one in my front yard when I was doing my room addition that was supplied by one of the, you know, the local building supply companies. They, they stuffed that thing full of all the materials that were going in, in my home, and, and it was nice and dry and clean and tidy and secure. I didn't have anybody coming and borrowing lumber during off times. I mean, it was a, it was a wonderful way for me to, to really deal with things, so I, I'm, I'm a little vexed as to why this is, and we have talked about this, and as I say, I know I've talked about this with Dave Solero. So, I'm looking forward to, to hearing the reasons why this would not be in allowed use also, right along with cargo containers, given the lot sizes that we're dealing with.
Yeah, understood.
Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm curious, your picture up there shows a semi-truck trailer that's, wheels are off, and it's sitting on the ground, correct?
No, that's a semi-truck with, with the wheels on, right, right square in the middle. The center picture still has the wheels on it.
I know, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the one on the bottom.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
To the, to the Commissioner, Kelly Mullen, Senior Planner with Washoe County, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. That is actually a cargo container. The, the items that are shown in the, the photo up there are all cargo containers, and just adding on to Planning Manager Lloyd's description regarding the difference between semi-trailers and cargo containers, there is a significant difference in terms of the structural integrity of the cargo container. As you can see in the, the picture in the top left, they are designed to hold significant amounts of weight, to have them stacked several high, so there is a difference in terms of that, that integrity of the structure itself compared to semi-trailers. That is one of the differences. Thank you.
But, Mr. Chair, this, this just doesn't make any sense to me, because I don't get, I mean, obviously, somebody's not going to stack semi-trailers high on their property, because there would be other problems associated with that, but to me, if you've, if you've got a semi-trailer and you've taken the wheels off, and it's sitting on the ground, the wheels and the axle off, it's sitting on the ground, you essentially have a cargo container. What, what are we worried is going to happen?
Is that discussed? Hold on just a second, I have, I have Mr. Leparelli signed in. Mr. Leparelli, would you like to chime in on this?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to interfere with the board's debate and questions about the subject, but I just want to point out that as written today, as introduced, the definition of cargo container specifically excludes the, the kind of thing you're talking about right now, a in tow trailer. So, you can't, you can't fix it today without starting over, because it's a, it's a fundamental change to the definition. So, if you don't want to proceed today, you don't have to introduce this, you can bring it back and, and change it to say what you want it to, but right now, as written, it excludes in tow trailers, and one of the reasons may be that if, if this device is capable of being hooked up to a tractor and, and towed around with wheels on it, you may have a situation where people begin parking trailers on their property and calling them cargo containers, but what they really are is, it's a, it's a storage yard for moving trailers around, and whether or not you want to permit that is totally up to you, but it, it could be part of the rationale for why there's a difference between a, a relatively permanently placed cargo container, as defined, to exclude the kind that you can roll around and, and hook up and use in a commercial enterprise.
Thank you, Mr. Leparelli. I appreciate your comment, but I still maintain that if the wheels have been removed, and so why isn't there language in our code that simply says, if it can't be moved by, I mean, it's not on wheels, it can't be moved, not on axles, there's no way it can be moved, and it's permanently placed in the location, I don't understand why we would say, "Well, you can have this kind, but you can't have that kind." This seems to me, and you guys are phenomenal, so please don't take this in a negative way, but this seems to me to be one of those issues where we need to get to yes first, instead of getting to no first, and so, I really think, I, I have a problem with this, and frankly, I can't support this introduction. I know we don't vote, but I don't support it.
Okay. Commissioner Lucy, and I'll, and I'm going to, I'm going to chime in here in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lloyd, and I understand Commissioner Burke, Burke Bigler's frustration with this and, and the difference. From my understanding, a, a cargo trailer that just had the wheels removed is very much different than a Conex box, in the sense that if you've driven down 395, you've seen they're structurally different. They're not as heavy-duty a normal cargo trailer, because they're just not built with that rigidity for trans, transatlantic shipping, and so, there is a difference structurally from a trailer that's had wheels removed and the, and the, and the, you know, so that may be the difference. From that standpoint, if that's the case, I'd like to hear a little bit more, because a Conex box, to me, can be stacked seven high with a number of, of weight on it. You couldn't do that with a, with a cargo trailer as is. You could flatten a trailer, and we've seen trailers along the 395 being, that have rolled over and been torn apart, so, if that's the case, that's what I'd like to know. Is that one of the reasons why that is the, the issue that it's not in this, as we're talking about?
That, primarily, that is the reason, structural differences between the two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so before I call on Commissioner Herman, what, what's the, what's the stacking allowance?
There is no allowance for stacking in, in residential zones.
Correct, okay, thank you.
But there is in commercial zones.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
That helped a lot.
And industrial.
I don't see any difference with it sitting on the ground, being used for storage, and there's no intent of stacking, or, I mean, that would be ridiculous, so, all right.
Commissioner Herman, is that, are you good? One, anything else?
I just would suggest that we, well, and on my, I were to vote on this, I would say, "Hey, wait until we get this straightened out."
Okay, and I'll, I'll make a comment here in just a second. Commissioner Burke Bigler?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, since we're not going to allow stacking anyway, and we're not, to me, it's, that argument doesn't hold any water. I just, that, you know, saying, "Well, it couldn't be stacked." Well, okay, we're not going to allow stacking. That's not something that's going to happen, so, I, I just, it seems to me that we are nitpicking on details, and we have spent so much time on this issue. This is one of the most frustrating things I've had to do since I became Commissioners, just to try to get cargo storage units approved. It's very frustrating, so I know where we're at, and I know we've only been working on this for 20 years, so I, I understand where everybody's coming from, but if we are not going to allow stacking anyway, it seems illogical to me that if this thing cannot be moved, it doesn't have wheels, it doesn't have axles, it cannot be moved, it's not going to be hooked up to a tractor and pulled around the property, which I completely agree with, we shouldn't allow. It seems to me that we're just being nitpicky, and I really have a problem with that. Thank you.
Okay, a couple, a couple more questions. On a residential lot, how many are allowed? Let's say on my one acre, how many, how many can I have?
Essentially, one per acre.
One per acre.
Right.
Okay?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kelly's going to clarify.
I think that's, is it supposed to, I thought it was two per acre, wasn't it?
If I, if I may clarify, Mr. Chair, thank you. So, I'm just going to switch over to one of the slides here that goes through the differences in sizes based on difference in number of containers potentially allowed based on parcel size. This is based on direction from the board, and for a cargo, excuse me, for a parcel that is less than one-half acre in size, up to one container would be allowed. For parcels that are between one-half acre and five acres in size, two containers would potentially be allowed...
Correct.
...over five acres, one per acre, or portion thereof, and one of the changes that our planning commission did recommend for the current draft was that if the property is less than one-half acre in size, that, that cargo container be limited to 200 square feet.
Right, a small one, a 20-footer, essentially, it's, which is actually less than 20, they're eight by, eight by 20s. Mr. Lloyd, when, when will you have the commercial vehicle update in the code? Because I think that that's probably the place where we can address this, because these things started life as a commercial vehicle, and I know one of the residents in, in my neighborhood had an issue on a converted motorhome, and it was just preposterous that they weren't going to allow him something that, that was recognized by the DMV, but because it had, it had two axles in the rear, a third one in the front, of course, that, that they weren't going to allow him to have it in the neighborhood because it was constituted as a commercial vehicle. So, when, when is that coming back to us? Give me a timeframe.
We would like to get started fairly quickly. I don't have any, any dates yet, but I, I can't commit to a certain date.
Can you have that by 3 o'clock?
Can't commit to 3 o'clock either, but we would like to bring this forward as quickly as we can.
So, Commissioners, I would, I would urge us not to send this back while I, while I recognize some of the deficiencies. This is still a huge leap forward for us in terms of, of the cargo container debacle. I, I don't, hold on just a second, Commissioner Burke Bigler. I, I don't, I don't argue, I'm not going to argue with Ms. Hilbert in any way, shape, or form. I, I think she's, she's pointed out an inconsistency in our code, one of those little loophole things that is just, it doesn't make a lot of sense, although I do completely understand Commissioner Lucy's position. I've, I've seen these things used, and again, they use them as job vans all the time, and they fill them with all manner of stuff, and it's on, can be on a parcel for maybe a year while they're constructing a home, and there can be multiple job vans, and I understand that that's allowed while a permit is, is open, but, but I think that, I think that we really do need to go back and, and visit this, not in this particular piece of code, but in a different slice of code. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, if it can be visited and, and corrected in the other, in the residential, I mean, in the commercial, I, I can, I can live with that, if it can be corrected there, but that, this is really, truly something that needs to be corrected, because we need to not have this inconsistency, and thank you two so much. Ms. Mullen, and you guys are fabulous, and you do great jobs. you guys are fabulous, and you do great jobs, and this has to be the most frustrating thing in the world for you. I know it is for me, and I am right it. So I appreciate everything you're doing, but please take this into consideration when you start working with the next one, and let's see if we can't fix that problem there. Thank you.
Commissioner Herman.
Thank you. Um, and, and back to the purpose of them. It's to, you know, we complain about people's yards being messy and things being stacked around and all this sort of thing. It eliminates that problem, so it, it'll, it'll save everybody a lot of trouble. And, and it'll stop, you know, yeah, it's, it's a great idea. And there's, getting back, I have a question for you. There are some cases that we've been following and working on, and, and like their case. Because we're working on this, can we make an exception for them to, to be, their, their situations are violation things and everything to be kind of set aside for a time until we get that, this and pass it?
While we're updating the code, I think she's asked.
That makes, I'm sorry. And through the chair, Commissioner Herman, that makes perfect sense, but I will be talking with the, uh, the code enforcement and, and code enforcement staff to see what, uh, what options are available. And, and certainly, if that is an option, we would, um, we would like to entertain that.
Thank you.
And I, and I, uh, final comment here, I have no one else signed in. I, I understand the need for code, and I understand, uh, being pedantic about the code, but also, it, it can be, um, over burdensome when you look at some of these things and you, and you ask yourself, especially given the sizes of parcels that we're dealing with, of the remoteness, uh, that we're dealing with, and the fact that, uh, really what you have is a, a neighbor who is, uh, wrapped around the axle, pun intended, uh, about an issue, um, and makes a complaint because, as everyone has acknowledged, Washtau County does not go out and seek these issues out. They are complaint-driven. So Commissioners, uh, with that said, I will entertain, uh, an introduction for Bill 1827 with a second reading on July 9th. Do I not have one?
I'll introduce it, Mr.
Okay, 'cause if not, I will, I will make the introduction. Go ahead, Commissioner Young.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I will introduce Bill Number 1827, and expect that to be heard for the final adoption, barring any major changes to the actual bill, to, uh, be heard on July 9th, 2019.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Um, Madam Manager, Item Number 23.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item Number 23 is a public hearing. This, um, and I believe we need to open this, um, to hear action to consider a report of each property delinquent on its utility charges and the amount of each property's delinquency, along with any objections to the report. And two, after considering the report and any objections to it, determine whether to adopt the report and correspondingly adopt a resolution to correct certain delinquent utility charges on the tax roll.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing for Item Number 23. Um, what, what is it that we have to do here, Mr. Leparelli? I, I see Mr. Hutchins is in the, in the audience.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hutchins is in the audience if you have specific questions, but this is the device that is available to the county to convert delinquent charges for, um, utility type services like drainage utilities, water utilities, into, um, a, into a property tax collection. In other words, adding the delinquency to the property tax bill so it can be collected like a property tax.
Okay. So we just need a motion and a second on this?
Yeah, a motion approving the resolution that, uh, Mr. Hutchins provided to you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burke Pigler.
Um, I moved to, we are holding the public hearing, and so after the public hearing, I moved to adopt and report, uh, the report of each property delinquent on its utility charges and the amount of each property delinquency, and a corresponding resolution that the certain deliquently utili- delinquent utility charges can be collected on the tax roll.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I, it was kind of simultaneous, but I think I heard Commissioner Herman as my second, my first second. Um, before I bring this back, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on Item Number 23?
I have no one signed in, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing no discussion, uh, motion by Ms. Burke Pigler, second by Ms. Herman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
And can you mark your ballots, please?
I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. It does. Okay. Thank you. Um, Item Number 24, do we have the need for a closed session, Mr. Leparelli?
No.
Item Number 25, um, Madam Clerk, public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vance Rushing, followed by Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Mr. Rushing, thank you for staying the entire meeting. That's...
Well, I hear tell that patience is a virtue, so, anyways, um, I give you a handout, and that is the laws, uh, the ordinance from Kennesaw, Georgia. You also have a map. You also have a couple pictures in there, that hopefully I'll get to at least one of those pictures. Anyways, um, Ms. Young mentioned mass shootings. A little something to consider, including you. Every single one of these mass shootings happened where guns are not allowed. Nowhere else. Always, where no guns are allowed. I don't know if you noticed, but I have an empty holster here. My pistol is in the truck. That man right there is the only one that stands between you, me, and something happening, should somebody get a wild hair up their rear end. That's why I ping so hard on this. I've been at this for then, almost 40 years. Okay? I've got binders, two-inch binders of article after article, going all the way back to the 1980s. Now, there's a map in there, okay? If you notice, Kennesaw, Georgia is about 35 miles from Atlanta. In between, you have Smyrna and you have Marietta. You go seven miles to Marietta, and the crime rate jumps to at least anywhere between zero and, I think, a high of about 15 murders. But they average about three, four, five murders a year in Marietta. Now, how is that happening seven miles away, where they have nothing but the state laws to go by? Okay? Now, go through those pictures. You see one there of a German soldier with a rifle. That rifle was starting to be issued to German soldiers around D-Day. That is the STG 43. It is very similar to the AKs, to ARs in size and weight, and also in the shell it fires. That is the only known weapon to ever formally carry the name Assault Rifle. It was named Sturmgever. And if anybody who knows German, that translates, and I don't know German, I worked with a woman who was from Germany, and she translated it for me, that translates into Assault Rifle. Okay? Think about that. That other picture is the first machine gun ever built. Technology notwithstanding.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Welcome back, Ms. Brandhorst.
Oh, thank you. Uh, my name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. Um, I'd like to go, uh, back to where I left off. Um, I didn't have enough time to explain. Uh, this person that did not have the insurance, uh, he was, um, already in, uh, the, uh, bugs were inside of his body, and the bullet holes were inside of his body, because he was homeless here. Then he traveled to San Jose for help. Oh, my. And, um, he didn't have no insurance, so, uh, they would not pick him up whatsoever, and that's where he died, in San Jose, California. The train robberies, I wanted to bring up the train robberies, because the train cars have been parked in Sparks. And those train cars, uh, we are not notified that the train cars are full of our merchandise in those train cars. And yet, there are people that are unloading the train cars by illegal. They cannot be, uh, unloading those train cars, because they don't have the permission to do this. But it's called train robberies. Oh. If you rob a train car and you take that merchandise out, you take it someplace else, you think that you can sell it, uh, because it's in your possession now, and now it's called train robberies. But who is responsible for all these train cars sitting on that property in Sparks? Um, we don't get notified that my train car is still sitting there with all the merchandise still in it, or even the money still sitting in that train car, and I don't get notified that that train car is still there. So somebody walks up, takes everything out of that train car, and takes it home, or even opens up a business and sells it all. Um, I would like to, you know, know who's responsible for all those people to, um, rob the train cars in that area, and then actually take it out and put it in their possession and actually sell it. Oh, my. So I just wanted to bring it up, uh, that they have no right to do this, and why don't we get notified that the train car is full of our merchandise and our money? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst.
That's all the public comment we have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Item Number 26, Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements. Madam Manager, anything?
I do not have anything for this item. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Lucy, I have you sign in first.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, one thing I would do, I would like to ask for, is that we could set a time for the board to have a discussion over the next, uh, in the next couple of months in regards to unsolicited proposals as it pertains to the courthouse and any expansion. So I'd like to get that on the agenda for having a little bit more of a robust discussion about, uh, you know, private partners and, and what we're going to be doing as it does with, I know we has, has received unsolicited proposals and how we're going to handle that. So I'd like to have that discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Herman.
I just wanted to thank the board for their help in solving that problem regarding cargo containers, and, uh, and so hopefully we make a successful change to that. Thank you.
Commissioner Burke Pigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just have a question for Mr. Leparelli. I had asked him to, um, give us an opinion on what it takes for us to become a Second Amendment sanctuary county, and I know you're working on it, and I wondered how, where are we? Are we getting there?
We're getting there. We, we are working on it, and, uh, we'll have a, a outline for you probably by the time of your next board meeting.
Good. I think, um, it is beneficial that the sheriff, it's beneficial to making us a sanctuary county, that the sheriff re- is refusing to enforce it, but it also might be beneficial to the sheriff's position if we ultimately say we, you know, make ourselves a sanctuary county. So I, I, I'm looking forward to hearing what the, the attorney, I mean, what the district attorneys have to say about it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Commissioners, anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing else, uh, thank you so much. We are adjourned.